Okay, I'd like to call the order. The Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, 6:30 PM. Please call the order and pay respects to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, noting of the roll.
Noted.
Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Move item 9A under item 6.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Uh, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 6 is public comment on items not on the agenda. If you've all gotten a copy of the agenda and you want to make a comment from the public on items that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. Seeing none. Uh, we're gonna go to item 9A under 6, and that's new hire recognition for the fire department. We're moving that up in case we have to have our services utilized. New hire recognition for Sean Goldie. Chief Pete?
Sean, can you come on up, please? Board members, it's my honor and privilege to be able to introduce to you Sean Goldie, who is our new firefighter paramedic that we've now hired. He started last Monday, comes to us with over 25 years of experience at St. Clair Shores, retired from there as a battalion chief, and he is now on our shift and working with our people. He now fills that last vacant spot that we've had open now for a year and a half. So, it's our pleasure now to finally swear as somebody else in news, so it's looking forward to it. So, if you could stand up in front of me there, raise your right hand at aye and state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution.
Yeah, I uphold.
And support the Constitution. And bylaws of the Oxford Fire Department.
And the bylaws of the Oxford Fire Department.
The constitutions of the State of Michigan.
The constitution of the State of Michigan.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And that I will fulfill the duties as a firefighter paramedic.
And will fulfill the duties of firefighter paramedic.
With the Oxford Fire Department.
With the Oxford Fire Department.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Go ahead, present it to him. Welcome. Thank you.
There you go.
Don't film in there.
There is a. Thank you very much and welcome, Sean.
Thank you. You do the rest of the fire now, or?
We'll do the fire later. We just wanted to make sure that...
You always want to try.
Yeah. No moving the rest of you ahead. All right. Item 7, first reading. Item A, zoning ordinance 67A dot 028, medical marijuana. Uh, with us tonight, Hans Rentrup, the attorney.
Good evening, Hans Rentrup, at Christine Allen Rentrup. Uh, for you again tonight on two matters, first of which is a zoning ordinance amendment to, uh, for first reading, uh, to allow, uh, regulate the location of medical marijuana facilities. Um, and the second later on the agenda will be a code amendment for a second reading, uh, to regulate and license such facilities. Um, the zoning ordinance amendment, you have seen a version of earlier in April. You may recall you had, it was presented to you just more for informational purposes. The, um, the planning commissions, we went back to the planning commission, the planning commission reviewed it, um, because of the significant changes we had made since it was reviewed earlier this year. Um, the attached red line shows all the changes that have been included since it was, since what you have now. So, compared to what you have in your book now, the red line shows all the changes that have made. Um, in summary, the, like I mentioned, the zoning ordinance amendment regulates the location of growers, secure transporters, and provisioning centers. Uh, growers and secure transporters should be located in industrial districts while provisioning centers are within three overlays in commercial districts, which would be also be in your packet. Uh, additionally, the zoning ordinance requires that all uses be special land uses. Marijuana activities cannot be viewed from outside of the building, that drive-throughs are prohibited, performance guarantees required for all uses, buildings are subject to initial and annual inspections, uh, no smoking permits is permitted on-site, outside storage is prohibited, a security system is required, that's also required under state law, um, odors must be kept inside, there's no sale of tobacco or alcohol allowed from same premises, um, there are certain restrictions on signage consistent with the zoning ordinance as it currently reads and generally speaking for signs. Growers may have no more than 12 plants and must be grown inside a building, um, 72 plants requires a, uh, outside of a patient caregiver requires a grower's license, which we'll talk about later. Uh, provisioning centers, as I mentioned, must be in overlays, there's limited to one provisioning center. They must have direct access to M24, be separated by 100, 1,250 feet, be free standing structures and must, and may sell incidental accessory products which are legal under the state law. Uh, one of the, as I mentioned before, one of the critical changes is changing the, from what you saw, uh, last time in April, from four overlay districts to three overlay districts. Um, finally, this ordinance makes clear that recreational grower operations are prohibited, as well as processors and Class C growers, which is the largest growers. Uh, the planning commission has unanimously recommended this approval of this ordinance with the changes noted, um, and with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Board members, I'll start with, uh, Trustee Charles.
We'll just, at the risk of being redundant, so we're reducing it from four to three zones.
That is three overlay districts, that's correct.
Clerk Wright?
I do have a couple of questions on this here. I don't know if I can scroll down to, to, uh, give you, Mr. Rentrup and the audience an idea of what we're looking for here. I guess one of them on, uh, section 5.35, and it's item J, it's on page 12, I believe. J, J1B, it indicates that the township, uh, will keep the security, uh, plan confidential, kept by the township. Who is required to keep that document?
I would anticipate that that document either be kept by the building department or clerk's office.
Okay, okay. And then, how do you exempt it from Freedom of Information Act disclosure?
It is, there's two, by two means. One, uh, my recollection is there's exemption specifically provided for under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Even if there isn't, it is confidential under the Freedom of Information Act. There is a specific exception to the Freedom of Information Act for security plans.
Okay, so it is protected.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, let's see. J, J4 indicates that, um, plans shown in any building to a house or provisioning centers either new construction or redevelopment and rehabilitation of an existing freestanding building is defined by this section. Any existing freestanding building to be redeveloped and revitalized must have been vacant for more than 12 months prior to the date the application is made to meet the goal of revitalizing the underutilized and economically distressed overlay areas. How do we as a township know when that building will be determined vacant?
There are a number of ways typically that's done. Um, they look at, you know, tax records, you look at, um, perhaps a certificate of occupancy change, you can look at things like last known addresses, the last, uh, the status of the ownership. Um, it's a, multiple different ways that you could make that determination. What I would imagine being fact is that 12 months is, can be the short end, is, from my understanding, most of the 12 months should be a minimum requirement based upon the zoning districts in which they're being proposed.
You know, that was my next question. Why, if, if you have a existing freestanding building already in place, why would you make the applicant wait 12 months?
It's, I'm sorry, it's not, the idea is not that they be waiting 12 months to apply. The idea is that it's a vacant building that's been sitting for 12 months or more, that that is a building that's subject to revitalization efforts, and it's, the idea is to encourage revitalization of distressed properties and, and improvement.
Okay. Um, what else? I've got other questions. I'm gonna let the rest go.
Sure.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari?
I'm all set.
Trustee Noel? I have no questions, thank you. Trustee Payne?
None.
And Trustee Colvin?
I just have a question about the overlay districts. Um, I just find this map very hard to read. Is there an actual description, like property description anywhere?
There is not, to my knowledge. Um, the, I know the planning, the planner has been working on putting together these maps, and it's my understanding that they're gonna be more better defined in the grand zoning map amendment, which he's overall working on. So, unfortunately, this is the best I was able to get from him.
Do you have no further questions? Um, I'd entertain questions from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Come out up. Do you have, uh, what I'd like to do is set some ground rules. There's a lot of people in here tonight. Uh, three minutes to speak, your, uh, name, address, and, uh, if you have some comments that are already being made, um, we, we understand it. Just raise your hand and agree with them, rather than have everybody come up and say the same thing. Mr. Rice?
Hi, gentlemen and ladies. Um, I agree with, uh, actually Curtis Wright's comments on freestanding buildings that have been there. Compared to a property that's vacant in that zone down there, there's very few vacant zoned properties. There's also no buildings down there that haven't been utilized in the last year. Now, I think, basically, we're not really giving everybody a fair chance at this, because what we're doing is basically giving profits for poor performance. If you didn't rent a building in a year or build something in a year, you shouldn't have first steps in this whole procedure. I own several buildings, I also have vacant lots. Uh, basically, you're throwing a lot of us right out of the, out of the gate. If you expect me to close my stores down and keep it for a year before I apply for the license, that's not really the right way of doing it. And I've talked to other people, I've talked to other townships, other cities, nobody does that, that I've seen. If you guys can produce that, great, let's find it. Uh, but don't just, uh, throw everybody out. There's several properties down there that could be redeveloped, and I'm not just talking about my own. I have five. But you're basically saying none of my properties are actually able to be able to do this. My one vacant property is not large enough to do, put a freestanding building by itself per township ordinance. So, tell me where I stand, and tell me where some of the other people that are probably in this audience stand. I think that is not the way to go. It's not the way they did it in the village, it's not the way they've done it in La Corian, that's not the way they've done it in Royal Oak, it's not the way they've done it in Troy. I've talked to several attorneys, they have never even heard of this before. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have a comment? Seeing none. I look for a motion. I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of zoning ordinance 67A dot 028 for the June 8th, 2022 Charter Township of the Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Curtis, seconded by Trustee Noel, uh, Trustee Payne, excuse me. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to second reading, 8A, Property Maintenance Code, Ordinance 138. Board members in your packet, uh, is the second reading for the Property Maintenance Code, 138, which, um, spells out our ordinance enforcement officers' guidelines on enforcing complaints in the building department, and gives us guidelines to remediate any situations. Are there any questions from the board members?
I move to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code Ordinance 138 as presented, uh, to be added to Charter, Chapter 10, the Oxford Charter Township Court of Ordinances.
Second. Okay. Treasurer Ferrari moved, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
All right. Moving on, 8B, ordinance number 132 dot 001, Medical Marijuana Facilities. Um, Attorney Rentrup.
As I mentioned earlier, this is the second part of the marijuana regulations. This is the code amendment. Um, this is consistent with what you were, saw the last go-around at your last meeting. Uh, it includes the changes that were recommended at that meeting, as well as some additional changes, um, that were discussed, uh, with board members prior to this meeting. Those changes are all shown in the red lines in your packet. Some of the changes, some changes include the following. First, clarifying the number of plants permitted under grower's license. It was asked that the Class A and Class B growers be identified with what, how many plants are allowed. That's now shown in the amendment. Uh, removing age access restrictions because they are addressed by state law, permitting contactless sales transactions, uh, limiting the number of available licenses to the following. Six grower's license, three for each class, three provisioning center license, and three secure transporter licenses. Uh, allowing, uh, application of special land use permit to be run concurrently with the application process. The prior version contemplated that you would have a special land use approval prior to making an application for a license. However, it was determined that this kind of could potentially put the cart before the horse, and that it would require someone to put a major investment into a new building without having any idea that whether they actually get a license. And so, the idea is to have them run concurrently. However, any approval of the, of a license would be concurrent, uh, contingent upon approval of a special land use permit from the planning commission. Additionally, makes the ordinance, uh, right now, the version you have makes the ordinance effective 14 days after, after it becomes, the zoning ordinance becomes effective. Um, prior discussions today, the thought was to extend that to, excuse me, uh, it should be 14 days later. It's, instead of just effective immediately, it'll be 14 days thereafter. As it sits right now, the earliest someone could apply would be, uh, the, under the zoning ordinance, you have a 30-day window for challenges. After that 30-day window becomes effective, after that window, you have 14 days to make the application. Additionally, the changes, other changes include requiring an applicant to make an annual renewal fee of $5,000. At the time, this was left blank in your packet from last month. Uh, $5,000 was selected because it's the max permitted under law. Um, it is a one-time view. I do have, it's always been my belief that that fee should reflect, uh, the actual cost of the processing of the application. Um, it probably is pretty close right now, it's hard to say, but I think as you move forward, you may have to adjust that fee to accurately reflect the cost of processing such applications. Additional change was the ordinance enforcement officer was revised to, the enforcement, we don't have the ordinance enforcement officer or the supervisor or his or her designee. Um, in addition to what you see before you tonight, there are some changes, as I mentioned, we would discuss today. Um, these changes are proposed as follows. Changing section 1449 to reflect that any license approval is contingent upon a license being approved by the state, and, as I mentioned before, special land use approval by the planning commission. Section 1450C, um, mentioned that that, changed that effective date requirement to add the additional 14 calendar days. And section 1453 regarding inspections, uh, there was considerable discussion about how this should be handled, um, and the concern was that, there were several thought processes. One, that any new, that provisioning centers constantly be new or renovated construction would require these kinds of inspections anyway, and so it was somewhat redundant. Um, addition, but then we considered the fact that this doesn't just apply to provisioning centers, but also growing facilities and secure transporting facilities. So, we wanted to include those requirements. So, what we're going to, we propose to include, uh, language is that, is have, uh, section 1453A read now, upon application for a license to be associated with an existing building, and after reviewed by the township clerk and/or his designee, and before any consideration is given, the township board shall have the inspection, or the, the consideration by township board, the inspection shall be done as provided in section 1453. Additionally, section 1453B will also include similar language, which would say, "A license associated with an existing building shall not be considered by the township board nor issued or renewed until satisfactory inspection and reviews are contemplated by the departments delineated in subsection A of this section, and written reports are provided to the clerk." Period. The last part we'll leave out because that requires a, all conditions be met and approval. The reports can be provided to the extent, uh, for the board's review and determining whether to issue a license. Uh, it has discretion as one of the, and that's part of the criteria to be considered by the board. The final issue that was, we, I don't believe, has fully been addressed yet, but was raised by Clerk Wright, um, last time around, was the issue of premises liability and casualty insurance, was, I went back and looked at that, that number came from the state law, $1,000, $100,000 as a minimum. It can certainly raise that, um, and oftentimes would be. So, if that wants to be changed to $1 million, I don't know that that's a problem, that might be something you wish to consider. Um, besides that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Uh, while we're up there, I'm gonna ask my first question. Uh, item B, "A license shall not be considered by the township board nor issued nor removed until satisfactory inspections and revisions are completed by the departments." What I wanted to do was not get the cart in front of the horse.
Understood.
I do not want to have somebody come here and say, "We're gonna build a million-dollar building, and we're gonna do all of its inspections before you can apply."
Yeah, and I think we've, with the changes I'm proposing tonight, I think we've limited that concern for two ways. Number one, um, this only applies to existing buildings, so if it's a brand-new build, you're not gonna have to meet these requirements, because obviously it would make sense to do so. Number two, uh, if it is an existing building, the reports still have to be prepared, and I would anticipate that report repaired and say, maybe you don't have quite enough lighting in the rear quarter of a building, but that that report will be presented to you as part of the licensing process, and that you would contingent, make your license contingent upon compliance with the, with the recommendations of the inspections.
So, you could pre-approve a license, but not guarantee the license unless the inspections of an existing building were done correctly?
Correct, correct. You could issue the license contingent upon the outstanding issues being addressed.
I just don't want to have somebody come here and say, "They're gonna buy a piece of property and build a building, and then all of a sudden, we don't issue them a license because they've spent a million dollars." It's...
It's not set up that way.
Okay.
Hans, can you restrict, or like put caveats in some of them? Because it's supposed to, uh, per, certain distressed commercially zoned properties. One of those zones on M24, there's 691 South Lake Pier that is pretty distressed. Could you somehow mandate that whoever's in that zone buys that building and incorporates that in their process?
No, we've really restricted it about as far as we can legally do so. Um, you're getting, you're getting a little too far down in the weeds. You've got overlay...
It's supposed to be distressed commercially. There's nothing more distressed than that building.
The, again, remember that you're issuing licenses upon approval, um, at your discretion as well, and the planning commission's can review this as a special land use permit and should be considering the degree of the buildings. So, there is a great deal of discretion authorized to both the planning commission as well as township board in doing so. But you, I don't think it would be legally possible to specifically mandate that someone take on an existing building.
Okay, even though the building is commercially distrac...
Certainly be appropriate, but not, I don't think the board can manage, micromanage to that level.
But how about the one zone where, uh, Mr. Rice brought up that there's only one, pretty much only one property in that zone that would pretty much qualify as distressed? What about those that might also qualify? Uh, exactly how I see this playing out is we're to set the 30 days, Mr. Rice or somebody in that zone's gonna say, "I object, because I wasn't qualified, uh, I was allowed to be part of the process." How do we address that? How do we remediate it?
I, I don't know that there's a, I mean, it depends on what you want to do. My understanding is the idea is to encourage these redevelopment of these properties. Um, I think this ordinance has presented, accomplished that to the best degree possible. There will always be people that are happy, and there will always be people that are upset about the conditions of his ordinance and the zoning restrictions put in place. There will always be winners and losers whenever you modify an ordinance provision, um, particularly zoning. And you have to take that into consideration and decide what you think is in the best interest of the community and go forward from there.
So, it's how we define distressed?
Well, it's, it, I mean, I think you, if you want to go to the standpoint of making specific, um, definition of distressed, you could do that. Um, that is an option. But I, otherwise, I think the idea is that, the, the idea behind this ordinance is to encourage certain areas to be redeveloped, reused, revitalized, um, and because this is typically a demand, high-demand use, um, and it's common zoning practice to encourage redevelopment of underutilized or, or, or under, properties, I think it's consistent with the law as it stands.
But it doesn't make sense if you don't take 691 South Pier into consideration.
Okay. Um, we'll start with Trustee Charles.
A little bit along, uh, along the lines of what, uh, Mr. Ferrari was saying, I'm just a little uncomfortable with some of the ambiguities about what qualifies as distressed or not, and then what gentleman over here, Mr. Rice, had said too, about waiting a whole year, um, as he said, rewarding people that, uh, don't have distressed properties, that's, that's a concern of mine in this.
Well, I think the, the idea behind this was that we don't want to take existing successful businesses and run them out, run them out to have new, another business take their place. The idea is that, is to encourage places that have not been utilized, that have been seen vacant, in some cases, my understanding, for many years, and to have those properties, push those properties in development and to push them into being improved.
Would not have been accomplished by the three zones that were selected?
That's what we did.
That's what, that's what the, the zones are selected for, yes.
Trustee Colvin?
I am all set tonight.
Okay. Trustee Payne?
Thank you.
And Trustee Noel? Yes, and I apologize. Can you, uh, one more time, run us through 1453B?
Certainly.
In regards to those license. I thought I had it down, and then I'd like to catch up again.
Okay, so the idea behind 1450B, it would be a license, and then insert the following language, "Associated with an existing building," and then continues, "Shall not be considered by the township board nor issued or renewed until satisfactory inspection renewals are completed by the departments delineated in subsection A of this section, and the reports are provided to the clerk, who will then forward them on to the township board." If you look at section 14, uh, 55, subsection A, the first option is, "Application information including the inspection investigation reports prepared by, as part of application process." So, when you're considering issuance of a license in your discretion, one of the things you will consider is the reports presented by those various entities. Again, it could be a situation where they satisfy the bulk, as an existing building, they satisfy the majority of the outstanding issues, but maybe they have a light bulb on one of their fire exits. The board could consider that and say, you know, this isn't, this won't preclude moving forward the application license.
So, who's responsible for the checks and balances?
I'm not trying to understand the question.
If the board says, "We'll go ahead with this under these exceptions," and who's responsible for making sure the, the exceptions are closed out?
I would imagine that you would, again, as part of your approval process, require, request that a reinspection be done. Additionally, the, and if that was to be forgotten, uh, the ordinance contemplates an annual renewal and annual inspections, so that it could be picked up at the next, next go-around in the renewal.
Okay. Let me try to help here too. What I think we're trying to get, uh, watch out for is illegal, non, a legal, non-conforming piece of industrial property, where you have a setback that's bad, whether you have a fencing that's bad, outside storage is bad, you don't want those buildings to continue to be non-conforming and then present them a license. What we intended to do is not hamper an applicant from remodeling a building or from building a building. a building. So if there is no building, the vacant land, it doesn't need an inspection.
Correct.
If it's remodel of a building, I think the only thing you're looking for is, is it a legal conforming piece of property?
And that would be, and that would be set forth actually in your zoning ordinance.
Right. So we're not giving, we're not holding a license at large until you get a C of O, and then you get your license. You apply for your license, and then your building has to pass inspections.
Correct.
You get the C of O.
What I think you would want to do, like I said, and the way it's set up right now is that you would get those reports, you may see that there are some issues, but you would issue the license contingent upon addressing those issues, because I think you'd want to have those issues addressed. So, but it would not necessarily hold up a licenses as you, to alleviate that concern. Correct.
Thank you. Trustee Payne, you said no. Treasurer Ferrari, you talked, you've said you didn't have anything else?
I've got three things.
Okay.
Great. Based upon 1453B, does 1453A still apply?
Yeah, it does, because I think 1450A, with the license to be applied, I mean, I suppose, I suppose you won't have to make the changes there, maybe it's redundant to do the changes in the 1453A, but it doesn't seem like it harms either. Makes it clear, I think, in my opinion.
And then can you walk me through again the publication date for this ordinance, the effective date on that?
Sure. So, that's a good question, because it is kind of confusing. Way I propose section 1450C, sub-C, which is on page nine, I believe it is, the redline at least. "The application for license during this article shall be accepted by the township 14 days following the effective date of the zoning ordinance amendment." The effective date of zoning ordinance amendment is the common effective date that we have used in the past, which is, we depend, will depend on whether a request is made by the lecturers to have a petition filed. So if there's, if, if you have to publish the, once the zoning ordinance amendment becomes effective, or is passed, it's your second reading, you have to publish it as required by law. You then have a 30-day window to accept the petitions, and then after that 30-day window, you have 14 additional days to accept that, before applications begin accepted.
So it's tied right to the zoning ordinance?
That is correct.
By law.
By law.
By, if you approve the code amendment as presented, yes, it will be tied to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So it'll be effective basically after the zoning ordinance is approved, based on conditions?
Correct, and plus 14 days.
Okay. My last, my last item is that there's overlapping definitions in the zoning ordinance and the standalone ordinance, 132.001. Is it possible that those definitions could be exactly worded the same way?
We've tried to hybrid, I mean, it may be possible. We tried to hybrid the zoning ordinance up a bit more to try to address some other issues, including, here's the problem. The code amendment strictly deals with medical marijuana facilities licensing, and those licenses issued in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Whereas the zoning ordinance amendment deals with that, but in addition to that, patient caregivers who operate, who tend to grow more than 12 marijuana plants. So that's why you see differing definitions. So if a patient, and this is under the existing ordinance right now, if a patient caregiver is allowed to grow 12 marijuana plants under the Medical Marijuana Act, not the Facilities Act, but the Medical Marijuana Act, for a patient, but if they seek to grow more than 12 plants in one building, they must do so in industrial district as a special land use permit. So we're trying to carry over that provision on with this new amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're not going to hinder the application process with having inspections done first?
I can't see how it would, no.
Okay. All right.
Treasurer Ferrari had an additional question.
Oh, you have another question? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead and ask me.
Quick question for you. In terms of distress, my fear is, let's say, and I don't want to name businesses, let's have an industry that unfortunately is on a downturn. Maybe I'm selling a certain product, so it's not as well as it was years ago. Even though I'm technically in business and still doing okay, it could be because maybe I've had the building paid off for 50 years, and I'm basically running it because I fix my own equipment. Could I be considered distressed even though I'm not vacant?
No.
You want to keep me in business even though I may not be in business anyway because of the field I'm in?
Typically, a distressed property is considered a property that's vacant, that's in a condition of disrepair. And, I mean, as a general rule, there are, you know, while there's not a definition specified in this ordinance, and that's something, if that's something they want, we can do that. But there are, you know, common law definitions of what, you know, condition of disrepair is and things of that nature. So I don't, I don't think it will be as difficult as it's made out to be, but, you know, I guess I can't answer that with 100% certainty today.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there no more questions? I'll look for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 132.001 as presented to be added to the, to chapter 14 and chapter 30 of the Oxford Charter Township Code of Ordinances.
If I may, did you intend to include the additions that I may suggest at this evening?
With the, can I just say with the additions?
Yes, I've noted them.
Stated by Attorney Rentrapp.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by trustee Payne, a second by trustee Nold. Any questions?
The only other question I might ask the board is if they're comfortable with the insurance requirements.
Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis, yes. Trustee Charles, yes. Treasurer Ferrari, no. Trustee Nold, yes. Trustee Colvin, and trustee Payne.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I lost my page, I feel like. All right, item 9B, sale of the fire department. Let's have you guys come on up.
Evening, board members. Here requesting tonight to be authorized to advertise and sell our 2007 Chevrolet Tahoe. Starting to get pretty rusted out. Miles are getting up there, parts are getting like impossible to find. Last year, we had to wait almost a month, probably close to two months to get a starter for it to try to go into it. So we don't need it. So at this point, I would like to be able to advertise it and take sealed bids on it and then sell to the highest bidder on it.
I move to authorize Fire Chief Pete Schultz to advertise, accept bids for the sale of the Oxford Fire Department, 2007 Chevrolet Tahoe.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Charles. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And trustee Charles.
Yes. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. 9C, purchase of a new engine fire truck.
The next one, I'm going to have Assistant Chief Majestic do that. He's been the lead of the committee that we put together to spec the truck and go out and research the different models and everything out there, so I will let him go ahead and present this part of it.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and board members. We began a committee back in July of last year to look into replacing our 1996 Engine 3, the one that's also on the agenda tonight for sale. It has outlived its usefulness to us, and it's becoming quite the money pit, along with actually some of our other engines. But what's going to happen, we will eliminate Engine 3, we will move Engine 1 down into reserve status, and then this new engine would then take its place. When we started this process last year, we narrowed down to a couple of manufacturers for, for them to kind of present to us their, what they could do for us to meet our needs. That was the Sutfin Corporation and the Pierce Corporation. Our first bids received back in October of last year started out at $628,352 for the Sutfin and $657,911 for the Pierce. And due to supply chain issues and the like, we've seen two additional increases by each manufacturer, ranging from 5% to 6% each every couple of months. And there's an additional price increase coming June 1st, which will be another 6% if we don't move forward. So basically, we've gone from, with the Sutfin, $628,352 today, or back in August, to $681,244 today, and after June 1st, it'll be $722,118. The Pierce, in the same vein, started out at $657, went up to $697, went up to $732. So we, we've done our due diligence, I believe, in finding an engine that will meet our needs moving forward, and we've, we've chosen the lesser expensive model. Sadly though, we're going to be needing another one in a couple of years, and this one's going to take two years to build, two years to 26 months. So, and that's not to mention our ambulances that are all over 100,000 miles on them as well, so. But we're here today for the engine, and if you have any questions for me, you have both the letter from Chief Schultz as well as the Sutfin proposal, and if we get the approval, we can have that price locked in, at least so that we don't get hit moving forward.
And not to get too much into the detail, I'm used to us just purchasing Pierce engines. Why would we purchase a Sutfin? I mean, without getting too far into the lights and whistles and all that.
Well, the one thing we found, Pierce is a proprietary manufacturer. And when it comes to replacing parts, and we've, we've learned this the hard way on a lot of things, just like many of our neighboring communities have done, is that when something breaks down, the only part you can buy is a Pierce. Whereas with the Sutfin, if we need new brake pads, we can get new brake pads through, you know, various dealers.
Chassis builder.
Yeah, if we need, if we need engine parts, we can go right to the Cummins dealer. And some of that stuff that we can't do with Pierce, we have to go directly through Pierce. The other thing is, and the consensus is industry-wide, at least in this area, because we've had quite a few departments, all that were Pierce, because Pierce was the Cadillac of the industry for the longest time, and I think they've rested on their laurels. And what we've seen is people going away from them for these types of things. As a matter of fact, even with this, in this case, when we reached out to Pierce, we didn't hear from them for almost four months. It was kind of like, they just, I don't know whether they just assumed we were just going to go with them altogether or what, but that's where we're at. And even Orion now went to, they went from Pierce to Sutfin, and now they're ordering more Sutfins. Independence did the exact same thing. They went to Sutfin, they're happy with it, and they are ordering more Sutfins. And that's kind of what Pierce used to be, and that's what we're seeing. So I feel pretty comfortable with it. Yes, sir?
How many companies are there?
Oh, gosh. Decent companies, renowned, and, you know, probably better, better than a half dozen, or about a half dozen, I'd say that would be between Pierce, Sutfin, Rosenbauer, KME, HME.
There are many. Before we ask any more questions, direct them to me so I can raise your hands instead of just jumping out there, please.
There's at least a half, half dozen reputable department or companies out there?
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari.
I move to approve the proposal from Sutfin Corporation dated May 5th, 2022, for the purchase of a Sutfin custom heavy-duty G9 pumper, complete and delivered in the amount of $681,244.65. Authorize Fire Chief Pete Schultz to sign any contract or purchase orders on behalf of the Oxford Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Nold. I'm going to start with questions with trustee Colvin.
No questions.
Trustee Payne.
Nope.
Trustee Nold.
No, thank you.
Treasurer Ferrari.
All set.
I have none.
Clerk Wright. None.
And trustee Charles.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Okay. Item 9D, request to sell engine number 3.
Engine number 3 is a 1996, Margie, you remember?
I do.
Pierce engine that we had. It's definitely outlived its life. The same things on it, we've got many, many parts on it that we can't get anymore trying to order things. I mean, the thing looks great when you're looking at it that way, but when you get underneath inside the pump, when you start looking at the chassis itself, underneath there, the frame rails and everything, is when we're having all the issues. So requesting permission to go ahead and put it up for sale, it's not something we got to hurry to sell in the next two weeks, but again, I can, this way hold out for a better company to hopefully buy it. There are numerous companies that specialize in selling used fire trucks and ambulances, and I will be contacting them, the same as we did when we did Engine 1 back in 2010. And what they will do is then they will go ahead and do all the advertising, the pictures and everything like that, and then they normally get like 7% for the, out of selling it to move it, but then they've got nationwide and actually international worldwide exposure trying to move it. So this way, we'll be able to sell everything on it, and also the Hearst-Jaws equipment that are on there too, those are all 2002 on there also, so definitely we outlive their life expectancy and safety-wise, so.
Okay. Yes, Treasurer Ferrari.
I move to authorize Fire Chief Pete Schultz to advertise and sell the Oxford Fire Department 1996 Pierce engine 3.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Nold. I'll start with trustee Charles. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Clerk Wright. No questions.
I have none. Treasurer Ferrari.
All set.
Trustee Nold, trustee Payne.
Nope.
Aren't you sad to see it go? Trustee Colvin.
First truck they bought.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Roll call. Oh, we have to have a roll, don't we? We voted on, we have to have a roll call on that. Yeah, don't thank me yet.
I take that back.
Russian.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, last one, Pete. Item 9E, offer to purchase parcel 04-21-404-021.
This piece of property was part of the two and a half to three acres that was donated to the Oxford Fire Department by Jack McMahon when they sold the McDonald's, or they actually told, tore the McDonald's property down. This was the piece of it that he owned. There was two pieces of property that constituted that property. This was the dirt lot that was, where the semi-trucks used to be able to pull in and park there, and it's between the tanning salon and where the old McDonald's property used to be. It's contiguous with the rest of the piece of property that goes across the back of the Fire Department. That piece out front, we don't need it. It cannot be sold to anybody except the two property owners on either side, because the piece of property has to be combined with, upon sale, immediately has to be combined with either one of the two properties in order to sell it. It would be non-conforming by itself, so I can't just say, you know, "Any one of you guys want to put a bid on it, buy it?" You can't do it, because you have to be one of the two property owners. So we had it appraised a couple of years ago before COVID. I took that price and raised it up to the $69,000. We've got, somebody came forward and has offered us and put a purchase agreement forward to purchase a piece of property, and I would like to be able to do that. And the money from that will be put towards, in the big square area that you see behind there, is that the Fire Department plans on building a training tower in there, so the funds that we get from that will be held and then put exactly towards building the training tower.
Trustee Payne.
I would like to make sure that the funds go directly into the fire funds, get deposited directly into the fire fund.
It'll happen.
Okay.
And I heard-
I think it should be part of the motion.
Okay, I heard Chief talk about a future fire training tower, so those funds would then be offsetting the cost of that.
Right, correct.
Look for a motion. Look for a motion?
I moved to approve the resolution authorizing sale of property as presented. Authorized Supervisor Jack Curtis, text you the purchase agreement between CSB Investments LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford. Authorized Supervisor Jack Curtis and Clerk Curtis W. Wright, take all steps needed to accomplish the sale of the property, including signed documents on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford, the necessary disarma for the closing and transfer of title. This, any proceeds from the sale will go to the Oxford Fire Department.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Start down. Trustee Colvin, do you have any questions? Trustee Payne? Trustee Nold?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Ferrari?
All set.
I have none. Clerk Wright?
No questions.
Trustee Charles?
No questions.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Chief. Sharp Engineering Report, item number 10. Hi, Jim, what do you have to report for us tonight?
A couple of quick things. One of them regarding the Safety Path Project. We bid this out a couple of months ago. They're beginning construction on some boardwalks. They're going to be staining those, so some of those, some of those will be out of service for a period of time, then power wash them, and then we're going to stain them as part of a maintenance project. And you'll see a bunch of pink paint on a lot of these safety paths out here. We're going to be overlaying, we're going to be removing some of them. So again, just for your knowledge and for the multitude of the public that is watching this broadcast, just be aware of that, that some of these pathways are going to be temporarily removed and then replaced. Home sales around here, I mean, they're still going like crazy. I mean, I don't know what's coming, interest rates and everything, but they're still doing a lot of those. And the last one, which is really not part of my report, although I was part of it, I'd really like for CJ to maybe get up and just speak for a minute about the $100,000 grant that he recently obtained for the sanitary sewer project, unless you plan on speaking about that later?
Yeah, I'll let you do that, Jim, because it took an effort between Jim Sharp, CJ Karnacki or Vance and Communication Manager, and Danielle Smith. And stand up and tell us what you just got from the county, CJ.
Turn it over to him, but very, very, very good job.
Okay, thank you. Well, board, thank you, board members. We received, or I received news yesterday, we got a $100,000 grant from Oakland County. It's through their local critical infrastructure grant program. This is going to cover the design and planning costs for the sanitary sewer extension from Gateway Drive to Dunlap Road along 24, and the design of the sewer that we ultimately want to go underneath the four streets that make up the Brad Dewey subdivision. The total cost for that design for both of those is $316,700. So this $100,000 grant, which was the maximum you could apply for, will cover a third of that cost.
Good job, three. Good job.
Paper salary for the year.
Thank you. Item 11, unfinished business, American Rescue Plan Act. I got Clerk Wright on there because he's a member of the committee. But, you know, the three things I wanted to talk about, number one, thank you, Danielle, we've got the required annual report for non-entitlements units. That was submitted on April 25th, acknowledged by the state for the feds that we completed that task on time. The ARPA committee continues to meet and discuss the projects already approved by the Township Board, and to plan for proposed projects with the next receipt of ARPA funds. Thirdly, we still welcome you to provide this committee, and the members are Clerk Wright, Trustee Payne, and?
Trustee Nold.
Trustee Nold. Any projects to which the ARPA committee should consider for funding, whether it's infrastructure, roads, safety paths, completion of something in our community, we will be getting another allocation of money. Also, in the packet was attached the opinion letter from Brittany Ellis, who is the attorney of record checking townships and cities in Michigan for what we reported to the state and feds. And the letter attached shows that we had all approved projects in conjunction with the requirements of the letter. So the committee did a great job in getting the money allocated based on the input we received. The money is funding many things in our community, and we did a, I want to thank the folks on the committee and Danielle that worked hard to get this all accomplished in time. Thank you. Item 11B, Oxford Cemetery Paving Project. I'll start, and we'll let Curtis finish. Board members, at the April 13th meeting, the Township Board approved for engineer Sharp to request a quote from the current contractor that's doing the safety path repair, to see if they could get a good price to have the paving done in Oxford Cemetery in the north section. Then I was, we were talking, the committee thought better if we got a comparable quote from the other entity that bid on the Safety Path Project but lost it, just to make sure we were getting a fair deal. And attached in the packet were the two quotes for it, and you'll see that Birmingham Seal Coat came in significantly lower than Sartor. And at this time, I'd look for a motion to waive the procurement policy bidding requirements based on us moving forward to award Birmingham Seal Coat the paving of the cemetery. Yes, Treasurer Ferrari?
I moved to waive the procurement policy bidding requirements and award the Oxford Cemetery Paving Project Birmingham Seal Coat, amount of $34,807.75. This $34,807.75 amount be paid with American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second? Ooh, that was close. A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Nold. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin? Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay, item 12A. In our township, we have an unwritten policy that checks can only be cut on certain dates. And what happens is, if an opportunity comes up for a reduced price with prepayment, or an emergency comes up where someone hasn't paid their Blue Cross bill, or someone needs money to pay to get a better price for something, there's an unwritten policy that we only cut checks on the check processing dates, the 15th and the end of the month. And what I'm looking for clarification and creating a special check in between those check payment cycles to capture discounts and to address emergencies or address concerns in the community. So I'm asking the board to allow a special check request to be honored, but before they're honored, they should be at the discretion of the clerk and/or the township supervisor. These requests generate work product in our clerk's department and in our treasurer's department, but currently, I feel that we have enough time to respond to emergencies and special deals by altering our unwritten check policy that we can have a special check request asked for and approved and cut at any time of the month. Treasurer Ferrari?
Jake, I've thought about that. What about maybe, because there's three of us, the two-thirds of us agree we write it?
Two-thirds is two people. That's exactly right.
I don't think...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Trustee Payne?
You're each managers of your department, okay? And you were elected by the people. We put a lot of faith and trust in each of your positions, and I would think that each one of you could make that decision on your own. Okay, I don't think it needs to be a two-thirds within the three of you. I believe that you each are smart enough or responsible enough to take that on. That's what I think. And I think that we should be able to, I understand that we have rules about when the checks are cut, and if the rules are being abused, I would ask for the clerk bring them back to the board, but we still have to go forward and do business, and there is always going to be an emergency in business. You will always have an emergency.
Thank you. And part of this was done because we're trying to capture and work with local people that don't have the money that large companies do to inventory large quantities of high-tech equipment, or perhaps we may have missed somebody's Blue Cross payment, and we're cutting a check for that. So, you know, I guess I'd make a motion to allow, at the discretion of the township clerk, that a special check may be issued outside of the current check cycles.
I'll wait till there's a second.
Second?
I have a motion by Supervisor Curtis, and I have a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions?
I do.
Susan has.
Step up to the microphone, please. Name and address.
Susan McCullough, 1151 Jefferson Street, LaPierre. Just a point of clarification, it's not just twice a month, and it doesn't affect your conversation, but there's three times a month that checks are cut. The day after a board meeting, so there's checks ready to go out tomorrow, the 15th and the 30th. So there's three times.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, I have a question.
I'll give the two-thirds.
The motion on the floor, are there no more questions?
I do.
Yes, sir. I thought you said no.
How frequently does this situation come up?
Well, Clerk Wright, do you have an answer to that?
I do, and I went back to January of 2021 and saw the special check request out there, and I'm going to say approximately there were 12 special checks that were issued.
Over what period, you said?
From January 1 of 2021 through current. Some of those may still apply for special check run. One of those that can occur unless we change our billing cycle is getting a check issued for sewer billing, because our sewer billing is usually done the first week of a given quarter, so that would be outside of the realm of issuing our regular check cycle. The other item that was most recently issued was the Blue Cross Blue Shield Bill for Parks and Recs, so they wouldn't lapse on their policy. And the reason why there was some discrepancy is because there was check requests that potentially was not deemed, in my opinion, as a needed check, but it's all subjective of my opinion, and maybe that opinion is not correct on special check requests, so.
Another question. What are some typical amounts that these special checks are written for?
Well, $2,100, $900, $1,100, $200, $344, $1,590, $1,130, and $13,455. So there's the special checks that were issued, from my research. So it doesn't happen often, but when it does, it's just a matter of making sure that that is an acceptable method of issuing a special check.
I know Joe's got an answer. Are there any other questions? Trustee Nold? We currently have in place a procedure to handle these special checks, correct? That would be Clerk Wright?
That's the discretion of the clerk, to say yes or no. If somebody comes in with a special check request, they'll be referred to me, and I will give my blessing, or not my blessing. And what's happened is, over the years, that, those requests have diminished tremendously because of trying to stick to a certain check deadline to get your information in on time so that we can get the work processed and we don't get the special check request.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I can give my take on it. The issue Jack was referring to is the same one that we purchased our Westinale virus stuff, you know, the mosquito dunks and everything. We both had approval at the same meeting. I used my credit card, next day order, boom, done. The board had, it was approved. Now, if Jack comes in front of us and says, I want to spend X, it's not approved by us, different story. And I told you, he had it approved, credit card, boom, done. End of story. I've already got my brokerage started out in the community. That's how I did it.
And we're working on the credit card policy for next month to streamline that. It's a little antiquated. Any other questions? Roll call.
All right. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item 12B, Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund Program Resolution. Clerk Wright?
Yes, this is a federally funded program called the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund, Michigan Homeowner, yeah, Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. And what this does for our benefit, or for residents' benefit, is gives them the ability to get a reduction or elimination of some of their outstanding debt from unforeseen circumstances from COVID or other unrelated downturns in the economy in the last couple of years. If I go down to the bottom here, you'll see right here, "Structure of Assistance and Payment Process Description of Qualified Expenses." This is MYHAF for abbreviation, "will be prioritized to eligible qualified expenses of the MYHAF program proceeds as follows." And you can see, this is the order of what these funds will be used for. There's approximately $206 million available for assistance throughout the state for this program, and by Oxford Township, this would allow people, in this case, centered on utilities, because this is something that would be, it would be administered through Oakland County, and I believe it's through the treasurer's office, to assist people with their hardships. And one of the things is, and it looks like it's pretty difficult to qualify, because it has to be 150% of the median poverty level. So I'm sure that there's going to be a very limited amount of people that can qualify, but in our opinion, it was that if this can assist somebody in our community, then I think it's a great program for us to approve. Originally, we had in the motion to have Supervisor Curtis approve or sign on behalf of the township, but we received an email from Mr. Cassanick from the Oakland County indicating that it's probably going to be a program that is between the state of Michigan and Oakland County. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Supervisor Curtis.
Okay, I did reach out to, I don't know how to say, is that Cassanick?
I think so.
Okay. If you go back up to that chart where it shows the number of options that it pays for or provides assistance to?
The hierarchy?
Yeah. I wanted to, I wanted a clear definition, because Treasurer Ferrari brought it up earlier, and it was item one, mortgage and housing assistance, item two, and item three, addressing we want to be made whole on our property taxes. And my question to him, which I don't have answered yet, is that the hierarchy of which they choose to make whole on? And if it is, Joe, your question's answered, we're pretty high up there. We're keeping people in their houses through either housing and loan assistance, land contracts, but they also looked out for us in the property taxes. So if that is the hierarchy, and it seems like it is, prioritize to eligible qualified expenses, it seems to me that we should, or I would go with this. So what's the board's pleasure?
So who makes us whole, the federal government or the state government?
We are, we are not, we are not responsible for paying any of that.
Yeah, but who pays us?
That's what I wanted to know, in which order, who pays the mortgage? Who, the state or the federal government? I believe it's the state.
It's kind of ironic, because the states can do that, why don't they help out the next agenda item?
That's because...
That's ironic. We're okay helping out these people, next group, no, we don't want to help them out.
Well, this is helping on an individual, not a city. So what's the board's pleasure? Clerk Wright?
I moved to approve the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. Michigan State Housing Development Authority, provide a participation agreement as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trustee Colvin?
Moving on, 12C. Board members, in your packet is a resolution in opposition to the payment of the Highland Park Sewer Debt. I don't know if you're all aware of it or not, but Highland Park, since Chrysler moved out, has not been paying the GLWA for their sewer payments. And the bill is being peanut butter spread across all municipalities and users of the sewer system to make it whole on our back. Like... Like communities like ours, we're responsible for $149,000 of their debt, which total was Many communities are taking the money and not paying it in their sewer bill and putting it in escrow. We have been advised that we may state opposition to it, but sooner or later, we're going to end up paying it. So we would like to place the resolution in their hands that this board approves, that we do not agree Oxford Township should be paying Highland Park's sewer bill. And we will continue to pay it so that at time that they do say we will pay it, we don't have to come up with the additional $150,000 at that time. It's better to take the bite of the elephant a little bit at a time and pay it, and we'll worry about it later. So with that...
Could we add it to, like Highland Park's sewer debt, maybe request they pay out of their ARPA funds?
We can't do anything other than pay our sewer bill.
That's it?
Our sewer bill includes it. And this has, this has been...
I think ARPA funds do.
Yep, yep, they do. And they also have all kinds of funds, but they just don't pay their sewer bill, and now the state has said, well, we're going to pay it for them.
So Mr. Curtis, first of all, Macomb County, if I recall, led the parade, and Oakland County is way behind the eight ball on this whole program, but at least we're finally doing something.
Yes.
So we're stuck with this. Why are we stuck with this? There's a contract that somebody messed up on, that we have to pay somebody else's bills? Is that why we got stuck with this?
Yes.
And who's responsible then?
Well, here's what they do. If you don't pay your bill, they turn off our pipe.
I'm not asking about that process, I'm asking, who got us to sign a contract that says we'll pay somebody else's bill?
I can't give you a name.
Okay, all right. Not our attorneys or anyone like that?
No, no.
Okay. And then you were saying that we were told by somebody, is that our firm, that said we should go ahead and pay?
We have been advised by attorneys that state, it's best to pay it now, rather than...
My question is, who advised us?
Who advised us?
Yes.
Many of the municipality attorneys from the other municipalities in Oakland County, at our OCAT's meeting, sat down and said, "Macomb County is keeping the money in escrow, and what happens is, that's another accounting charge for us. We had to keep it aside. We're going to end up paying it anyway."
What are some of the communities around us doing, like Independence Township, Orion Township?
I don't know. I don't know.
They didn't talk about it at the meeting you're talking about?
No, some talked about it, Macomb talked about it, but this is just dumped in our lap and we're reacting to it.
Is there a possibility that we change our mind at some point and say, "We'll hold money back"? I mean, I'm okay with right now, but it seems to me we're rewarding these people for being implied by sending irresponsible...
I don't want to look like we're rewarding them, and that's wordsmithing. What we're doing is, we were told by our provider of our sewer service that their debt is now on our back, and we're paying it. There's litigation at the state level with Highland Park to not allow this to happen. It's happening, and what we found in the past is, you're going to end up paying it.
Is there a timeline that you heard about at your meeting?
No.
So it's kind of a black hole at this point?
Yes. Any other, yes, or Treasurer Ferrari?
I move to approve the resolution in opposition to the imposition of Highland Park's sewer debt on Oxford Township's residents and businesses as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knoll. Sorry for not paying attention. I do, I do want to just say one thing. We don't agree with this, Rod, we don't like this. It is jammed down our throat, and what happens with the GLWA and us being at the top of the loop, we're the last ones that they really care about, and if we want our sewer to continue to flow, we pay it. So, if there are no other questions, roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yep.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Item D, 12D, Village Tax Collection Posting Agreement?
Board members, in front of you against the posting agreement for the Village of Oxford, where we do the backend of their tax collection process. We've done it now, I think, ten years. Ten years now, it's always worked out pretty well. So if you'd like to continue, I've got a motion for you. I'm going to make a motion, authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari to execute the agreement for Oxford Village Tax PSNA postings as presented. That's a formal agreement to the minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knoll. Roll call, please. Oh, any questions? I'm sorry. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Knoll?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
We had no items removed from the consent agenda. Item 14, public comment. Any public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Rice.
I'm Rick Rice again. I own several properties in Oxford. I'm just wondering when the township's going to have the new overlay for the green zones, now that the ordinance has been passed. There's obviously, all of those green zone properties are not in the green zone now, because they don't meet ordinance. So my attorney's actually contacting me, he's watching right now, and he wants to know which green zones or properties are going to be in the green zone, period, before court battles happen. He just went through the same thing at a city, didn't work out real well for the city. Second of all, the tax or the sewer, and that's why it's stuck around, do you know how much it's going to go up per unit, or commercially, or is it going to go across the board?
I just think it's absorbing it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
My sewer bill at my Oxford Coin Laundromat has tripled in the last 10 years. It's a third more than it is at my Lake Ranch store, which I have City Water, and that store is much busier than this one. So this might be the nail in the coffin for Oxford Laundromat. How long does the business have to be closed before it can actually apply for the license? Or can it be done just before the license is issued, when the building's done? Is there, I have some hard decisions to make. So my first question is, when can the overlay be viewed?
At this time, we can't answer your questions, Rick. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So I've taken your questions down, and I'll get them to you possibly as soon as tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Any other public comment? Seeing none? Board of Trustees comments? Trustee Charles?
Let's see, it's only quarter two. Gypsy moss, of course, or spongy moss, whatever we choose. Quick update again. Approximately two weeks from now, they will commence spraying. I say approximate because it's weather dependent. There's been some initial spotting of hatching, but not a lot, so that's approximate. This Friday, there's an email going out to different agencies to alert them to this possible date, so if people call and see mysterious, or see a helicopter flying in early morning hours, they know it's spraying gypsy moss, it's not an invasion or something like that. Oxford Youth Association, we have an event this Fri over at Seymour Lake Park. We have 128 people that we'll be working with, an award ceremony and food over there. That'll be Friday, this coming Friday. And then Catherine, would you like to talk about DDA? Do you want me to throw a few things out there? You can fill in the blanks, so I see Chief Schultz is here. We have three board members, almost a quorum, I guess. Couple of good things we're doing with the DDA, we've got some work being done by the movie theater there, we're removing the, some of those eyesores that are right next to where the bank and the theater, those planters, we're improving those. We're going to tear those down, we approved that just of the day, Monday night, so it's a nice thing. We also found some good information, too, the parking lot, I can't remember the address right now, but the empty lot at the northwest quadrant. Chief Schultz, do you know the street address by any chance?
No.
All right. Anyhow, we had somebody agree to give us, Ajax is going to give us asphalt at no cost, and Birmingham Seal Coat is going to apply it at no cost to us, so we're going to approve that. We got permission from the, obviously from the building owner, and the village agreed to extend their insurance, so be doing some pretty cool things this coming year at that empty lot. That's a big, big thing. One of the things we're also working out at that same lot is putting a mural there, too, of the downtown, so it can look a lot nicer than it has been for the last million I'll just mention the survey that we did on the trolley right now, we've looked at the trolley being about a 15% increase in businesses. And we're doing a survey right now, we have the business owners and riders, just to check what they like, what they see that we can improve upon. And you might have read that the trolley's had some repair issues, it's been out of action for a while due to an oil leak. And it's a little bit like what Chief Schultz was saying with, was it, what's the name of that fire truck company, Pierce, was it?
Yeah.
The trolley itself is a proprietary company, so getting parts has been challenging. So if anyone asks you, that's one reason it's not running. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Clerk Wright? No comments tonight.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Hold on, I'd expect that. The whole marijuana, the medical marijuana issue, I hope we, I'd like to see us, I would like to have seen us define distressed better, because in the different quadrants, I mean, and I know there's the quadrant, that's where the old party keg was, and that whole thing. If we wore it to the building next to it, there's nothing more distressed than the party keg. Then the other quadrant, you've got different levels of distress, you've got a closed business, then you've got another business who just come up here and said he's suffering. So it's, I think that's where we're going to run into issues and problems with this whole marijuana, is finding distressed, and I think that's the issue I'd like to have us work out before we go any further. That's all my comments.
Trustee Knoll?
No comments, thank you.
Trustee Payne?
No comment.
Trustee Colvin?
I just want to congratulate the team again on the $100,000 grant, well done. Really good work, and yeah, that's all.
Okay, I've got a few. First off, let me tell you, besides $100,000, CJ and team has acquired $238,050 in grants and contribution as far as close as today. That's $238,000 for Oxford. The additional monies from the state revenue sharing, census increase from 2020 census, Joe, we worked it out, it was $221,475 the township garnered from the increase of 1,895 people in the community. We have a sponsored kickball tournament at the Miracle Field in Lake Orion on May 22 at 10:30. I know that some folks in the office have signed up to do it, I know that some firefighters have signed up to do it. Anybody that wants to come to Friendship Park on Sunday, May 22 at 10:30, Matt's going to lead the parade, I can see it now, Sunday, May 22 at 10:30, and cheer on the Oxford team. We're being supported from Ox, South Oxford, that's who our sponsor is, they've put in $1,000 to have our team play for charity. We're going to go out and get some T-shirts for our team and make it go of it. But we assembled a team, we're going to meet down there and play. Our $1,000 team entry fee was paid for, again, by South Oxford, and they keep reiterating that. Winning team gets 50% of the purse for a charity of their choice, and other prizes will be awarded. So if you are interested, please see me or Danielle, and we'll take your name and number down, and if you want to kick the ball, which I will not be doing, I'll be there, but won't be doing it. Lastly, Oxford, as Rod led to the village, supporting the arts in Oxford, gentleman is painting a mural on the wall, and he's seeking donations. It's being painted by Nick Hotman, who was an Oxford High School class in 2001, June 1st to June 10th of 2022. They're looking for support for the arts to help pay for supplies and his time to paint this on the wall. So if anybody wants to help out, see myself or Danielle. And that's it.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Thank you all for attending.